For the city of Highland Park, Illinois, January 27th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brockman here.
Councilmember Ross here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Present.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Here.
Your ordering.
Here, we have a quorum. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and the closed session regular meeting of January 13, 2025.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? There are none, the minutes are approved. Scheduled business. So, Gita, is this Joel's question?
Yes, Director Fontaine will introduce the first item, the demolition tax applicability.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
This evening, we have, or tonight, a presentation, a short presentation regarding the demolition tax and its special applicability rules. Specific question before council tonight would be for feedback and direction with regard to the following. Should the city code be amended to include an additional applicability provision that would make the demolition tax not applicable to new owners under certain conditions and with particular requirements, which we'll delve through in a moment. Just by way of background, we have, essentially, the code has what's called an affordable demolition tax. And that code does have special applicability rules that are intended to avoid taxing in certain circumstances. As you know, Mayor and Council, we have a demolition tax of $10,000 for homes that are more than 50% demolished in the community. The special applicability rules essentially make the following situations not have to pay the tax. If it's for affordable dwelling units, either by agreement with the Housing Commission, or a home that is affordable itself, or there's a medical condition and the resident will have affordable, or will be of an income that is deemed an affordable unit if they will. There are certain existing property owners that can benefit from a, from the tax not being applicable to them. This, this particular applicability rule provides relief to existing property owners using the property for five or more years as their primary residence. So that's a really important element to this. An existing property owner has to be living there as primary residence for five years to take advantage of that particular applicability rule. And then, of course, force majeure or accidental fire circumstances. If somebody has a fire, they need to do a certain amount of work or demolish the whole home where the, where the tax would otherwise apply, it would be exempt. Okay, so to delve into the existing property owner's special applicability rule, we refer to this as the five and five covenant, and it applies to certain owner applicants where, specifically, the applicant is an owner of a property for five years preceding the date of application. This is referred to as the pre-permitting period. And continues on the property at all times after the pre-permit period until five years immediately after the certificate of occupancy. And this is referred to as the post-permit period. So this, this type of owner would, would not have to pay the demolition tax should they do repairs, renovations, additions that would cause 50% or more of the existing structure to be demolished. An important provision of the code with regard to this existing property owner applicability rule is that the property owner, the property has been the applicant's primary residence throughout the pre-permit period that specified above in this slide and what I just had mentioned, and throughout the post-permit period. And so they have to sign an affidavit and things like that as formal documents that have to be agreed to and made, and representations made as part of the covenant process. We do have some of those covenants out there, and from time to time, they are, come due, if you will. We've had a particular case in which a covenant had come due where someone had to pay the additional charge of 5% per annum because they did not abide by the covenant's restrictions. So that happens rarely. Most of the times, people do, and then the covenant falls away. So what we see here in our code, and in the case of an applicant who's before us here this evening, he's joined us with his family. How are you, Peter? Nice to see you. We, we came across a situation where, while we really don't have a provision in the code to address their particular situation, and we talked with staff, we talked with the city manager, and, and staff thought that it would make sense to have the council provide direction and feedback on this because there seems to be this, this provision is not in the code, and we're wondering if you would agree whether it should be or not. The, essentially, this, this five and five covenant that I just described does not apply to property owners who've reached, recently purchased a property. So what we're proposing, or what we see as maybe perhaps missing, council may or may not agree with that, but what perhaps might be missing is that we don't have a new property owner rule, applicability rule. And we would fashion it similar to the existing five and five covenant for existing property owners. And staff recommends that a new special applicability rule be included that requires a covenant with a post-permit period 10 years instead of five years, but does not require prior ownership, and that that might be a way to address this particular need and what I think staff thinks is a, you know, potentially an oversight in the code. So you have a new property owner in town, somebody's come to Highland Park, purchased a home, wants to live there, does renovations, repairs, addition, does things to their home, makes a major investment, triggers the demo tax, and says, well, geez, you know, if I waited five years to do this, I could do it and get the covenant, but because I decided to do it moving in, I can't. That's where staff thought, hmm, was that intended? And so why are we here tonight to seek your guidance? So with this, you know, in terms of the 10 years, why the 10 years? Well, because we have a five and five covenant, which says you have to live here five years before primary residence, and you have to live five years after primary residence, right? So we thought, well, if the person's not living there prior, what can we do to say, hey, we want longevity. We don't want just flipping, right? This is intended not to have flippers. That's what this, this, the current rule is of the five and five. This, then, would be a zero-ten we're proposing, which would essentially ensure that this person's serious about living there for an extended period of time, a similar length of time as the person who was an owner prior to the demolition. So that's the logic behind it. There's nothing more, nothing less to that. It's to ensure longevity, and the intent is there. Now, if someone does not live there as a primary residence for the 10 years, bless you, the, the same thing that would happen with the five and five if you didn't live up to the covenant's restrictions there, you'd still owe the demo tax with the 5% per annum interest paid. And so that's, that's what the proposal is, and I seek council's feedback and direction as, should the city code be amended to include an additional applicability provision? And if you support such policy change, we would have to develop an ordinance and come back to make that change. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor. And then in terms of this case today, given that the law is where it is now, what would be the provision to help them as they move forward, right? Or is that? At this, at this point, the applicant owes the $10,000 because they have triggered the demolition tax based on our current code. Okay, and so I guess my question for Steve, I mean, I thought that was what was on our agenda was this.
This is on, this is for discussion.
Right.
If you agree with this and we, and we proceed with an amendment, it can be made effective immediately, and we make sure it's applicable to the applicant.
Right, but it would be, maybe the whole, and then it needs to.
Right, right now, it's for discussion. It's not on your agenda tonight, but it could be two weeks from tonight.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were addressing the issue at hand and that, talking in theory with my new friend at the end of the table here.
Or if you think it's just an exception to the rule, and you just want to grant them relief, that's certainly an option, too.
Okay, I mean, because that's frankly where I thought we were headed, and it seemed like.
Oh, yeah, I, let me expand on what the city manager just said. We're a home rule municipality. This is your rule. The city manager is charged with enforcement of our rules. If you want to advise her to waive this rule under a home rule authority, that can be done. I would recommend, even so, we consider an amendment to our code in, in, in some manner.
Right.
But I, I don't know if waiting two weeks would be a problem.
It is not. I, I would respectfully say that it is not. And does this current situation, again, force majeure, I mean, if you're opening a wall and finding something that wasn't found during the inspection, or is it more tornado, hurricane, earthquake? It's an act of God, and it's been. Mold is not an act of God.
The definition of force majeure, Mayor, is something out of the control of the property.
Got it, got it, got it. So, you know, folks buy, and in this case, you know, a home that needs work, has lots of mold sometimes, sometimes allow them to collect, and unfortunately, that's not a force majeure because, you know, somebody, some property owner allowed that happening. And had we known about it before, the new property owner was saying they're going to fix it, we would have done an enforcement action, a code enforcement, not, you know, that, that's, that's why. All right, well, I kind of would like this conversation to address both this instant case and then also consider the policies going forward. And maybe it can be one in the same, but to me, it seemed like an opportunity for one-off conversation that seemed to be kind of caught between a rock and a hard place just because of the strictness of our law. So why don't we just run down the table? If you want to jump in, and thank you.
So I'm going to start by saying I'm a little uncomfortable looking at opportunities to amend our code on individual situations. This, respectfully, this is a situation that is unforeseen, I understand that. But that happens to individual homeowners, whether we're doing our own construction or not, under a variety of circumstances that may or may not lead to such extensive work that it becomes considered a teardown. I have not decided how I fall down on this issue either way, and I'm interested in listening to what everybody else says. But with that in mind, I, I can see this spurring other people who face unexpected economic burdens as they're rehaving a house that they may have lived in for less than five years under other circumstances that are strictly an economic consideration. So those are my concerns.
And I think it's important to note that this law came into play to directly address the impact of affordable housing being torn down. And I think there's a difference between affordable housing being torn down and redoing some portion of your home and finding something that now requires more demo than you had originally planned.
Well, I, I understand that. And so we identified where the demolition is. This has also had an impact on historic preservation and maintenance of the existing stock, which we prefer over a complete teardown. But as I said, I haven't reached a conclusion of where I'm going to shake out on this, but those are my preliminary concerns.
Okay, thanks.
I've got similar concerns to, the current law has, has some qualifications for exemption, which this doesn't meet, and my understanding is that the demo tax was put in place to discourage people from tearing down affordable housing stock and to compensate for losses by putting funding into development of replacement affordable housing. But I'm concerned about making policy boost on a specific case, and I think if we add more exemptions to the law, it just further dilutes the original intent of it. So I'm, I'm sorry for what you're going through. I, I live in an older home, and when we, when we did our original work on it, found a lot of things we didn't expect that happens. But to me, this is, this is a law that's in place for a reason.
So I guess my question at the onset was individual case and changing the law. And so I'm looking to, to kind of share, I mean, I'm getting the gist, but kind of where are you in terms of this situation and changing the law?
I'm not in favor of changing the law.
Right.
I'm certainly, you know, terrible situation that you're in, but I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about making an exception in one case, which leads us then to potential exceptions in the future. If we want to change the definition of demolition, you know, maybe 50% isn't an appropriate number, maybe it changes a little bit.
That's a great point. Okay.
Maybe that helps with this sort of situation.
Okay, Annette?
So I will answer your questions, because I, but I really want to thank staff for the explanation of the 10 years, because I did not understand that, and if anything, that was one of my questions today. I'm not in favor at all of an individual getting some sort of dispensation in this particular case. I don't think that's good lawmaking, and anybody could open up their wall and have an old house. A lot of us live in old houses and have found that, and it wasn't fun. But I am in favor of changing the law when I think that we have brought an opportunity which clarifies and improves on our lawmaking. And one of the reasons the five and five rule is so important is this is aimed at demolition, which actually does have a definition, and that 50% is probably a pretty good definition. So I would not be in favor of changing that status. But what I do think is important to note is when you're given the opportunity to look at it from a stability point of view, and I think that's what this law is aimed at, if a developer, and by the way, thank you for the transparency that you are a developer, but this is your personal case, and I'm looking at this as a long-term resident. And if a long-term resident wants to be here for 10 years, whether that's five years, not knowing there was mold in the house and changing it right away, or coming in, finding the mold, realizing it's going to be that much of a demolition, actually, not because they're trying to tear down a little, little house and build this monstrosity, but they have the proper FAR, but because they want to improve on it, and found that stuff in the walls, but they're making the 10-year commitment. So we're not talking about flipping, we're not talking about developers, we're talking about long-term residents. So I view this as a real opportunity for us to look at new homeowners and say, we want to include you in our long-term community, and this is a way to do that with a 10-year rule. So I think it's a great opportunity. I'm sorry for your trouble, but you're helping the city, I think. And I would be very much in favor of changing the law, not doing a one-off, because I don't believe in that, and, and keeping the demolition at 50% and what is basically construction standard, because that seemed fine, and I just want to make sure we don't have developers coming in here and taking advantage of, oh, yeah, I can flip this house. So anyhow, that's where I come out. Does that answer all your questions?
It did, thank you. Rosa?
So I was, one of my questions was going to be, which you answered, Joel, so thank you, was if someone decided to stay for seven years, what would they incur in terms of, what, what they would cost, what they would owe the city? But you answered that question. I'm also, would be in favor of changing the ordinance of 10 years. I think that if someone is here for 10 years, and that shows their commitment to Highland Park and is new, new residence. I also was going to say, I'm not with the one-off, but in your situation, I feel for you guys, and I, you know, if there's some way that we could work with them, I would be in favor of that. But yes, I would be in favor of making the change.
Great, thanks.
I am not in, in favor of changing it. I, you know, I, I mean, I'll say $10,000, as far as I know, it hasn't, that amount hasn't changed for many years.
Correct.
So it's relatively low in some respects because it just hasn't changed, it's been that forever. And I, I do feel that, you know, those are, you know, the risks you, you, you take. You have, you know, inspectors, you have, you know, that, that, you do your due diligence on the house, and I, I, it does feel like it's one, one case that is, you know, changing, changing this in, in our minds, so I, I have to say I'm not, not in favor.
Okay, thank you. Others?
Well, you know, we know that laws often are challenged due to exceptions. Because, you know, the law could not anticipate, you know, some unforeseen circumstances. So I think there is precedent to look at and accept an outlier or something that doesn't fit and ask ourselves the question, is that just indicate a flaw in the law or a gap in the law? And I owe most of the opinion that I would not want us to make an exception rule, but actually allow the exception in front of us to have us look like you have as a staff, whether there is a, a gap in the law that we could fill. And I feel comfortable and that it desires to change the law, so not only it can address this exception, but it can address other similar situations. And what is, to me, what is the philosophy that I think I would want us to incorporate? We want to be welcome in the city. We want people to move into the city. You know, this family and other friends like them come, invest, they have a desire to build a life here, and if there's a way that is lawful and congruent with a philosophy of preventing flipping, and I like the 10 to the zero ratio thing rather than 5-5, I think it's, preserves this whole 10-year longevity thing. It's, it's creative, but not in an irresponsible way. I think it's in a way that is in alignment with what was intended when the law was created the way it was. So I'm in favor of making a law that can address the situation of this one, and I think it preserves the original intent of no flipping, longevity. And I would add a welcoming statement that, thanks for coming here, you hit the wall, if you will, on something that you didn't expect, but why not cooperate with you to address that in the context of also addressing, I think, a flaw in the law?
Right. And I'm in that camp as well, that, you know, the preservation of the original intent, the ability to continue to have access to resources to address our housing situation, preservation issues and so forth, but not say we're going to change the law just in one case, this now applies across the board, and we're delighted to have you in Highland Park. So, yes, Yumi?
One more question. I am not familiar with what other municipalities do vis-à-vis a demolition tax. Are we an outlier, or we?
We are.
We are.
Very few have a demolition.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Right, and this is the primary source for our housing trust fund?
Yeah.
So it, it feeds into, you know, housing and understanding that if you're taking away affordable housing, how can you address the need for affordable housing? Yes, Tony, and then Kim?
So having had a chance to listen to everybody, I'm still uncomfortable with the circumstances, but the 10-year requirement of staying on site and the consequences of not complying with that, I think do protect that. I think it addresses some of the concerns that Councilmember Stone has addressed. So while I'm somewhat uncomfortable with it, I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and make that amendment with a 10-year exception. I would not agree to an individual exception.
Thank you.
As Councilmember Ross mentioned, this $10,000 hasn't been changed in a long time. If we're going to be looking at this at all, do we want to look at that as well at the same time?
I was hoping you would bring that up. Yeah, I mean, is there a trust in increasing, given that our housing trust fund is, you know, not as sustained as it probably should be?
It's pretty healthy.
It is pretty healthy, okay, yes. The trust fund is in good shape now, but it has some, some significant demands coming its way. Absolutely. And I would say that, you know, if, if the council wanted to take a, a look at the demo tax and changing that, we would do that as part of the budget process, and we'd make a recommendation typically, unless there's some reason to do it sooner, and then you direct that, and we'll do that. Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Yeah, I don't know what the, it's been what, 20 years? Yes, it's about, about 20 years, yeah. Okay. We, yeah, we haven't talked about it for about, I think it was before the pandemic that we talked about it last in terms of changing or considering change. Okay, yes.
I, I just want to chip in on that. I'd be very in favor of talking about that, possibly graduating in different taxes in different circumstances, but with respect to the trust fund, part of the reason it's particularly healthy were there, there were some recent unusual contributions from large developers. The demolition tax has not been a great source, if I'm correct, of funds for that, for that trust.
Right, right, okay. All right, so, yes, Yumi?
I actually wanted to add that it actually did make a difference to me that we are an outlier with, with that in terms of how I think about it.
Okay, great, Joel? And per Councilmember Bloomberg's comments, yes, the demo tax is, is highly variable, okay, and very much market-driven, all right? So the types of developments that yield it are significantly costly, and so, you know, they ebb and flow, and, and there aren't many of those anymore. We did, in the past, have a lot more. They have winged quite a bit for a sustained period of time, it's not just an anomaly. Having said that, we've made changes in the code, and the council's approved changes in the code, to require payment in lieu for partial affordable units required. This has been a very good source of income, it was what our intent was, and it's, it's really helped. So we do have that still on an ongoing basis, we expect to have more of that, so just keep that in mind as well, and we'll be sure to package that all in the fee recommendations part of the budget process. Okay. Okay, so, Corporation Council?
I'm looking for you to determine consensus.
Your word is cut out for you. So we have consensus for the recommendation by staff with the 10-year.
So we'll have an ordinance on your agenda in two weeks.
February 10?
Correct, February 10, and it would, it'd include Peter and his family, just even though they're pending construction renovation of their home, right? And then we will add to the major project work plan, review of the demo tax, so that'll go through our budget process with staff review and working with the Housing Commission and come back to you for a formal recommendation.
Perfect, okay. Thanks, everybody, for your thoughtful input. Thank you for bringing this question to us. Good luck with the project. We need to know what your baby's name is.
Nathan.
Ah, he's a good egg.
He's looking forward to coming in the house soon, so.
Well, we're delighted to welcome you to Highland Park. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hopefully no more surprises.
Exactly.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been, it's been good, though. Thank you guys for talking, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a great night, we'll see you soon. Maybe we'll see you in two weeks. Okay, thanks, everybody, for that good conversation. Our next item is about the vacancy tax policy discussion, and this is sort of a review. We had this conversation previously, and it has come back, and thank you, Steve. Those who are attorneys asked for continuing legal education credits after the packet. Those of you who are not attorneys, look at how much fun you're missing what?
Three credits.
Three credits.
So Mayor, just very briefly, included in the packet is a staff report, which includes a legal analysis. We are looking for your feedback tonight as it pertains to the possibility of advancing a vacancy tax. You are correct that this issue has come up repeatedly over the years. Councilmember Bloomberg and I were talking about more than 10 years ago. I know the mayor, Councilmember Bloomberg, had raised this issue, it was looked at at the time, and it does repeatedly come up. So Legal Counsel has taken a deeper dive into some of the examples that were brought to our attention from other states. And so we've got a detailed staff report, which includes that legal analysis in the packet. I won't go through that, but these are bullet points, just really just high-level summary of what's included in there. There are constitutional concerns with advancing a vacancy tax. We want to make sure that you are aware of that. Examples in California have been brought to our attention, and so the legal research and review included those regulations, court challenges, findings from that. There are other vacancy tax efforts that have been advanced, and Legal looked at the applicability of those in Illinois, and did determine that under Illinois law, we don't have the authority to set property tax rates or limits on vacancies. And so just wanted, we did that review. And then there are alternate considerations that could be reviewed. I'm not quite sure it gets towards the intent of what we've been talking about, but for example, you know, reviewing these properties as they've retained to a nuisance is a consideration. Having property owners register their vacant property. Now, we have a registration program right now for all businesses, just so we know who the property owner is and their contact information, but we could require registration of vacant properties, so at least we are aware when a business is leaving and have that formal record of how long it's been vacant and what efforts are being made to, to lease or otherwise occupy that space. and have that formal record of how long it's been vacant and what efforts are being made to lease or otherwise occupy that space. In terms of next steps, if there is policy, if there is support from the City Council to further review this or to study any other aspect of this, we would recommend that it be referred with your feedback and direction to the Business and Economic Development Advisory Group. And at that group is where we want, would want to make sure to engage with property owners and brokers and others that are really in this field, have a private interest obviously in their property, to get their feedback. And then if there is support, we just identified several different bullet points that we felt were important to make sure that we are really capturing the intent of what the policy interest is. And so, for example, having a minimum length of time that a property needs to be vacant before any kind of penalty is imposed. Size of property makes a difference to some individuals. And so looking at specific parameters in that regard, again, if there's an interest to advance forward. So with that, just looking for your feedback in terms of our next steps.
Okay.
Tony? Even though I brought this up initially sometime ago when we talked about it, I'm not real comfortable with it for some of the reasons that staff has brought forward. I don't really want to impose that kind of a negative circumstance. I realize that there are some vacancies in town. The problem has significantly diminished over time since this first came up. I'm sort of uncomfortable with that. Not sort of, completely uncomfortable with the notion of a vacancy tax. I also think the potential for very expensive litigation is high. This isn't easy litigation and it's litigation that would continue to rise through court systems at increasing expenses. And I don't like the way that would come out either economically or in terms of the impression we leave about the city. The registration thing is a little more interesting because it allows us to at least keep track, talk to landlords who have persistent vacancies over time, and explore what the root of individual vacancies may be, which is where the city may be able to help and where the city would be properly involved in the process.
Anybody else confidence?
Yeah, I mean, not being a lawyer, but in many city of the legal issues, even talking about constitutional law,
Right.
I'm like, whoa, okay.
California Superior Court.
Yeah, so I recognize that I know enough to go, that is like a hornet's nest. And to your point, right, it's really very risky. Having acknowledged that, I still feel we have a problem. Maybe it's not as bad as it's been, but I don't like the fact that the city has zero leverage for irresponsible property owners when it comes to leaving things open. So while the law may not be the way to go with the tax part, I feel that we have to see what alternative methods there are. And, you know, you surface some. I think they require more study. There could be unintended consequences, which also were in your report. You know, we don't want to hurt, you know, property owners that for whatever reason, you know, there is not an irresponsible reason why it's empty, but some other reason, which you don't know. So I worry about unintended consequences, but I believe it's our responsibility, you know, for stewards of the city to really address where it's blight. I mean, a vacancy like that over time is blight. And I don't think we can, we should allow that and we should find alternative methods to see what is carrot or stick, whatever you want to call it, incentive or conversation or whatever we want to call it. There have, I believe there have to be some other ways and I would want us to look into that and I would want us to BDAG in the process. I think that's a great proof. Obviously, staff does its job and then I'd like to see what comes out of that.
So where are you on registration specifically?
You know, actually.
Like, I just want to hear what else is out there before I leave.
Yeah, I mean, registration is like a good kind of hygiene thing. It's like, you know, oh, now we know when it's starting to be vacant. I think that's, whatever other method we come up with, having the proof that it's been vacant since this time and it kind of serves notice that we're paying attention.
Right.
So whatever we want to do, we say, hey, here's your registration, you've been vacant since this time. And then we have a way of, so I think that that is proper, but it's not like the thing is a solved problem.
Right. I mean, the good news is we are at 93% occupancy, which is amazing. But to that point, I think we do want to hold people accountable in whatever form we can.
And just one more point to that point. Even if we're 97%, we know that there are some.
There's some people.
That are just permanently seemingly to be vacant. And if that comes about really our responsibility to address that, then it's our responsibility to address that.
Kim and then you.
Thanks. We've done a lot of work over the past few years. We've paved the roads in the downtown area, we've upgraded the streetscape, we've added furniture, we've hosted events, and it's had an impact, which is great. But as Councilmember Tapia said, we need some leverage over these persistent vacancies. I don't know that a vacancy tax is the way to go because the legal issues concern me. I don't think I want to spend the city's time and money on legal battles. I'd rather spend it on actual upgrades. But are there other things we can do? I know we talked at one point about building permits. And is, you know, if somebody's in violation or if somebody has vacancies, is there any way to withhold permits for new construction from those property owners? Or, you know, to do something to incentivize them to fix the violations before they get to build something? Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if there's other creative methods. I don't know if there are other communities that have done anything to try and address vacancies. But this isn't the one that I would look at first, I guess.
Is registration in the country?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we require rental properties to register.
Exactly.
This seems like a good way to be able to stay in communication with those vacant property owners.
Okay, okay. You lead and then Marissa.
I support the idea of a registry of vacant spaces. I guess I was surprised that we don't already keep track of that.
We don't require the owner to register with us.
And we don't have a fee with it.
Yeah, we don't have a fee, but we do document the few spaces that are vacant.
Okay. Well, more robust registry seems, a registry seems like a good idea. The 93% vacancies, I assume includes.
No, no, no.
Occupancy.
Yeah.
That's what I meant to say, 93% occupancy, 7% vacancy.
Right.
I assume includes non-ground floor spaces. I, it's just that we're, I mean, all sorts of business. What we're looking at, I think, at least what matters in terms of vibrancy, is the ground floor spaces.
Well, that, again, that's everything, but that's a policy question if we only want to look at ground floor commercial.
And I know that there's a, you know, feeling that we've been doing well with the economic incentives. You know, that the things are, you know, spaces are filling up with restaurants. But as I remember very early on when I first joined council, that very few vacant spaces are set up with kitchens and I, we don't have the funds, we can't fill all the vacancies with restaurants. And also I don't think that we have the funds to keep the economic incentives going long-term. So I don't think that's a, I still feel like the vacant spaces need to be addressed. I read the.
The facade improvement grants are still available, obviously, to anybody regardless of whether there are food.
Yes, that is true. I read the report by Staff and Corporation Council and I appreciate the challenges. You know, I appreciate landlords have rights. My concern is that, you know, our duty is to serve Highland Park residents as a whole and we keep hearing complaints over vacancies. I would say that, given the legal challenges of, you know, a vacancy tax with the whole business of this concept called taking, which was very interesting to read about.
Read about it for years, right, Nancy?
The, I guess what, it just seems like you, there shouldn't be, you know, a vacancy tax break. And, you know, you're taxed on, right, on your revenue.
So that's what all those bills were that the various members of the Illinois General Assembly have been trying to get through, but they never made it past the Rules Committee. So they never really even had much of a hearing. But absolutely the legislators have been trying to move on that, taking away that tax break.
Right.
It hasn't gone through.
It hasn't gone through. Well, the other issue, I'm not really super knowledgeable about this. I just remember a property owner whose spaces are, well, filled, I won't name him here, but mentioned to me the business about the Tiff district and how vacant spaces, maybe you can explain this better to me, how vacant spaces, you know, don't have to pay into the incentives but benefit from them. Am I correct about this? I guess what I'm talking about is just the benefits that landlords are getting from keeping their spaces vacant. That's my concern.
So to be clear, vacant properties pay taxes, but there is currently in Illinois an ability to get certain relief from the assessed valuation of the tax if you have vacant property. Other states have closed that loophole or that ability. And that's, as the mayor indicated, and I put, I gave you copies of the legislative attempts. It's been attempted in Illinois and may still continue.
We can certainly put it up the flagpole again this session.
For your own legislators.
Right.
To close that loophole here in Illinois.
But the fact that it hasn't even moved out of rules three different times is really dismaying and makes you wonder who's putting their thumbs.
Bottom line for me is that I'm comfortable having BDAG.
Take a look?
Take a look.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Marissa?
So really just this, pretty much what a lot of other people said, that I, based on the legal issues, I would not be comfortable doing a vacancy tax. Obviously, registration, that would make sense. And based on just our incentive programs that we have going, the city is, you know, we definitely have a lot of new openings and this incentive program is continuing with the vibrancy in Highland Park. So I think this would be counterproductive if we did a vacancy tax. And we want to continue to attract businesses and we have been doing incredible jobs, so. So I'm not going to go on, but that's how I feel.
Thank you. Yeah, Anna?
Okay, so a couple of points as usual. First of all, I don't know that I'd call it a vacancy tax, but I'm in favor of having something out there. I really commend Legal Counsel both for the treatise that they gave us last night. Those of us who went to law school, I really felt like I was either in property law studying for a final or constitutional law. So it was very, very well done. I love the creativity of the nuisance issue and finding that way. There were a couple of other things that had been brainstormed previously in BDAG and I brought this up a year ago. Some of those had to do with a registration, which I'm completely in favor of. Checking back in three months to see where it is, giving it a period, six-month period, whatever that is. And at that time, instead of a tax, instead of a punitive thing, giving incentives. So let's say a landlord who doesn't have a kitchen, has the property up to snuff and decides to do a pop-up. And something with not-for-profit groups who need space, who are willing to have an insurance policy so that they can go into that space for three nights for one week because it's Halloween. I don't know, just whatever it is. But I think there are a lot of different things that I would like to see explored and Legal Counsel opened it up. And so I am completely in favor of sending this back to BDAG. I think it's also a really good way to interact with an advisory group that came up with some very creative ideas, wanted to give those to the City Council. Felt a year ago when it was brought up that maybe we weren't ready to hear it. Now we've gone back, you know, we have some legal bases from which to look at it. And perhaps that way we could see about finding creative ways in which to incentivize our property owners to go forward. And so I'm very much in favor of that. Frankly, whether it's a pop-up, a short-term lease, streamlining the permitting for that type of thing because that landlord is showing that he or she is taking the initiative to attempt to rent, perhaps not to the long-term tenant because they haven't found the right tenant, but they are making efforts. And to me, in many ways, when you look at the legislation and in various states, it was as much about the effort that the landlord is making as the actual rental over a period of time. But the reason the registration was important was to say, well, after six months, you've done nothing. After three years, you've done nothing. But if you've had two or three pop-ups or you've done some things within that timeframe, then rather than penalizing, we want to incentivize you to do it. So that's why I would come out to say, let's send it to BDAG. And get some recommendations. Let's make sure that Legal is working closely because we don't understand the interest, the little, little things that are not so little, whether it's about TIPS, state law, different laws, and different programs that are out there in different states. So that's where I'm from.
That's great, thank you. I think pretty much everybody agrees with having BDAG take an extra look at this. And I was asking Gina, Marissa, because I wanted to know what the sort of pop-up regulation situation currently is. So that's a question.
So they, yeah, pop-ups are definitely possible provided that the proposed use meets the applicable zoning for that district. They still have to get a permit and meet life and safety regulations. So definitely possible.
I have like five or six different things like pop-ups as a suggestion, that assuming they were within code, that we could use this initiatives. But I'll save that for when BDAG is the alternate to Marissa.
Okay.
Okay.
Andres and then Tony?
I just want to, I like the idea of the encouraging, lots of mature thoughts.
Usage.
Do you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, the usage issue, yeah, come back to me. This is a small point I just want to make.
Oh, sentence.
I got distracted by the second.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, there are some economic drivers that just exist as a part of the system. Landlords who are not charging rent aren't getting any income and therefore they're paying lower taxes. Not on the property taxes, but they're not paying taxes on collective rents. But there are landlords who own multiple properties who find certain economic advantages to keeping the properties empty. And that's a very difficult problem for us to address, especially with the state as well. I like the idea of pop-ups, but pop-ups are not always welcomed by existing business owners because they have certain advantages of competition that don't include long-term rents and a variety of other things. So be a little cautious about that. We do have incentives and I was going to make a remark about this later. The entire program that we've put into place, the grant and loan program, has incentives that encourage landlords. We were willing to give a certain amount of money as long as that's met by the prospective tenant and the landlord or the existing tenant and the property owner. But there is an option that if the landlord refuses to participate, the tenant can come forward with a letter that the landlord has refused and then we still go forward with the program. I don't really want to penalize tenants, but I don't see any, the primary issue, I think that we have all agreed, underlying a lot of this problem are few property owners. I would not, I would like to see us amend the incentive program in a couple of ways, but among the other things, that if a landlord doesn't participate, the package, at least as it's currently structured, would not be available to expand an existing business or to bring in an existing business. And the landlord has to say, look, I want business in my property, the city wants business in that property. The landlord has to participate in that economic event.
Thank you.
I remember now. No, I just want to underline, I love the idea of incentivizing effort. Obviously, outcome, right? But I think this will get to, you know, for whatever reason, it might be a difficult piece of property to rent long-term. But the thing that really feels very irresponsible is when you, not only is it vacant, but they're not showing seemingly any effort to pay. They're not returning calls, they're not having a broker out there.
It's looking nasty.
You know, so on the one hand, well, the economy what it is, the property might be this. There might be some things that really are legitimate reasons why they're not renting it out, but when they're not trying, that's a part that I think.
Well, that's what the laws in New York and DC really aimed at. And that's why I think that that's another way of looking at it.
And there's a good, you know, parallels unemployment insurance, right? You've got to show that you're looking for a job.
Right. I literally was thinking that. Yes, give me.
I don't know that I'm adding a ton here, but I did want to say I'm not, you know, I don't think anyone here is interested in penalizing property owners. If we can incentivize them further, I would support that. And I do want to say, as much as I appreciate the rights of landowners, we represent tens of thousands of residents who want to see fewer vacant spaces. And I would ask, you know, for a very robust registry. And I don't know to what extent city staff can keep track of who the landlords are talking to, why a tenant didn't work out. But, you know, have that robust dialogue with landlords where, I mean, I think you are in touch with landlords. I know you are. But that we are keeping track, we are watching and, you know, want to know why reasonable tenants, I mean, is that overstaffed?
No, we do. We do get that information. And some businesses find other locations that meet their needs, some just retire and close up their business. So, yeah, we definitely do monitor that information.
Kim, then Annette?
Just a quick related issue. I've noticed recently that some of the window coverings in some of those vacant spaces have fallen down. Can staff just do a quick walkthrough at some point and address that?
Yeah, we do that every spring. So, yeah, that is definitely scheduled as well as throughout the year, just periodically when we see things. So if there's something specific, you could let me know, but we definitely review those on an ongoing basis.
I'm sorry, there was one other point that I wanted to bring up. So one of the things that they looked at as a standard also was that any fees or taxes that were collected, you know, went to a particular fund. And what I liked about it was I thought if in fact we did charge either for permitting or there was a fee after a certain duration, that fund would go to the initiatives program. So for the improvements of the size of other businesses, so that any money that we were actually taking in was to upgrade the neighborhoods. And if the blighted property is improved, and so they would in theory qualify for that, those finances too. And to Councilmember Blumberg's point, I actually am in complete agreement with that too. That if in fact, I'm very disturbed by the fact that I now see a second landlord who sees the loophole. So we are paying. And I want to pay, but I want to have everybody pay, not just us. So I am in complete agreement.
Okay. So back to BDAG registration?
Yes. And then just to confirm, so the food and beverage incentive as well as the boutique incentive, we were planning to bring back just as a touch point with the city council this year. I talked to the mayor earlier, so we've got that scheduled right now, tentatively for the June committee of the whole. We could bring it back earlier, but the reason for that is because we just need time to see, are these working? Like, what are their numbers?
If everyone could do it at the end of the year, and I say, can we do it in June? Just to kind of get a.
Just like that early June meeting.
Anyway, we can make sure everyone's there because it's an important policy conversation, but that was the timing because we wanted some time to just truly be able to assess the effectiveness of this program. So I did talk to Councilmember Blumberg about the specific provision that owners need to contribute. And so just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. We can have BDAG opine on that issue as well and then bring that back when we come back with a full report and recommendation to you.
Yeah, there are certain implications that that may not be great. I mean, my immediate reaction is we want the landlord to participate, but it has the indirect potential to penalize either existing, you know, user or restaurateur, and we don't necessarily want to do that.
Right. Because we know there are some property owners that say, I absolutely will not contribute, but the tenant is saying, I will, but can I just get some help? Yeah.
I just wanted to let everyone know, this is on the agenda tomorrow for BDAG. So we will be talking about all the incentives, just kind of a brief overview, but specifically more opining on the exterior frame program now that it's been in place and it's extended for over a year, looking at other things we should change in the policy.
Yeah. But just so we're clear, we were not going to talk about this unless the council was supportive of it. This was not on.
So is that element, the vacant storefronts also on?
It's on the agenda for tomorrow, would be in a future BDAG.
Okay. With your permission, I'd like to be at that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, you need to be.
I'm sorry. So BDAG meets and we'll discuss this. And what is then the process?
So then they're, so what they're going to do is, so we have, you know, Amy Amberg, who's a property owner here today. And so part of the BDAG is having a policy conversation with the BDAG advisors, getting their input. Also doing outreach with property owners and brokers and other interested parties to get their feedback on, you know, doing a survey. And why are these vacant? Are you looking for incentives? What would motivate you to get these properties leased? As well as other property owners we know have an interest in this as well. And bringing all that information back, all the considerations, back to the city council at a committee of the whole for policy discussion. And then if there's any policy directives that would come at a formal city council meeting.
I mean, I'm stating the obvious, but thank you for that. So we'll have another opportunity to discuss this. And it's just, I think about, you know, some of the vacant spaces, the larger ones, where it, I talked about the tens of thousands of residents who want and fill, but there's a, you know, ripple effect in terms of the other retail on the street when they're vacant spaces. I mean, it just has this widespread effect. And I feel, I know we all feel that we want to address this.
And it's not only motivation. You know, I think that what Councilmember Tapius said too is really important. It'd be nice to have something that, you know, is kind of all encompassing on a bunch of different levels, motivating as well as, you know, what happens if they won't to pay over a long period.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Looking forward to the follow-up. Our next item is about a review of drone shows and fireworks displays.
Okay. So at the last city council meeting, we provided an overview of the plan for Independence Day for 2025. And thanks to the city council for your feedback as we coordinate with the park district of Highland Park on that event. So a question was raised as it pertains to, do we want to have a drone show in 2025? Do we want to go back to fireworks in the future? So policy questions this evening is if there is an interest in a drone show for this year, our recommendation is that we have it coincide with a city event in the downtown district, similar to what we did last year. So we could do Stews and Brews, for example. So we have an existing evening entertainment and then the drone show would take place at the conclusion of that. It is possible to do it on July 3rd, which is when the park district is planning their Fourth Fest. At this time, they are planning to end programming at 8:30. And our consultant who does the drone show does not recommend anything before 9:30. So we would have a gap that we could certainly talk to the park district about. The other challenge that we have is the consideration with timing, just in light of staffing demands, you know, safety plans for different events, and then having something all night for the 3rd, and then we come back at, you know, 6, 7 o'clock on the 4th for the events that we have for the city. If there isn't interest in fireworks, our recommendation is that we issue a request for proposal in '25 for a pyrotechnic show in '26. It's possible to do it this year, but we are kind of late in the game in terms of securing a consulting contract for a fireworks display. So just very briefly in terms of drones. So as you may recall, we ended up pursuing a drone contract initially for a number of reasons. One, it was using more of a trauma-informed approach. Because of the concerns with the noise and the effect of fireworks, drones provides that trauma-informed sensitivity for that event. Our contract is for $50,000. It's about a 10, 12-minute show. They bring something like over 250 drones that they set up. Is my number right?
So our contract is for 150 drones? They traditionally give us 200.
200 drones. And then certainly the environmental considerations. So these are battery-operated, minimal noise emissions, and they're reusable. And it's also a customized show. In terms of fireworks, now, we do have neighboring communities that have fireworks displays. We do hear concerns from our own residents about those displays because of the noise and impact that they have. But in terms of, you know, the city controlling contract, we just need to recognize that they do have stress on individuals as well as pets. We talked about the timing again. If there's interest, we'd recommend planning it for 2026. The estimated cost for fireworks is about 20,000 to 35,000. It ends up being about a 20-minute show. And then, you know, we talked about the environmental considerations, which are kind of the opposite of drones. Okay. So very brief overview, but looking for your feedback. Do we want to have a drone show this year? And if that answer is yes, our recommendation is that we do it in the late summer, early fall. Or do you want to go back to a fireworks show? In which case, we would recommend that we would plan that for '26 and work on it in '25.
Great. Thanks. And I'll just share where I'm coming from. As cool and unique as the drone show is, I think it's an unbelievable amount of money that's not really all that additive to what's already a great city event. And I'd rather have that money for more events, to be honest with you. You know, outdoor Luby Night or something that's more family and community oriented than a 10-minute, $50,000 drone show. That's just where I'm coming from. Andres, you had your hand up.
Well, I'll check that box there and the point you just made. I'd rather have more events that last all night rather than the 10-minute thing. But a couple of things, you know, I have conflicted about the fireworks because, and I'm going to use a couple Latin culture parallels, things that I can relate to. You know, fireworks are traditional. You know, they're very exciting. You grew up with it, you know, you have all that. And comparable to, I haven't grown up in bullfights, you know, it's tradition, it's colorful. But then, you know, time goes on and you kind of start realizing that it has some harmful effects for a lot of different reasons. And so Latin culture has been really hard to let go of the bullfights. But, you know, you look at how cruel it is and it's pretty horrific when you think about it. You know, some of your perspective changes. And while I would not compare fireworks to the horror of the bullfight, it's still comparable, right? That nostalgic, the memory of it, you know, it's hard to let go of it, but then when you see the unintended consequences and, you know, with the environment and et cetera, et cetera. And then you add to the impact on people and really being sensitive to, not only because of what happened here, but it's always been an issue for people who are sensitive, right? So we have to be more inclusive and sensitive and all that. So as hard as it is for me to say, man, we really have to look at letting go of the fireworks in the way, same way I had to let go of bullfights. It was really hard. I'm sorry that it was. But it was a regular. And you see cultures in Spain and, you know, actually protesting against bullfights. And it's a culture change, right? And I know we'll get resistance by traditionalists, you know, about the fireworks. I'm there, you know, it's so. And it's not about denying that it's not nostalgic and it has really nice connotations. But I think we got to really look at the new data and the impact and the greater awareness that we have. So on that side of the fireworks, I'd be like, yeah, I think we got to let them go. So that's where I'm at there. Back to the drones. I think the drones maybe once in a while, every few years, might be worth the money. But doing it every year as the substitute to the fireworks, I don't think it's going to use the money. I think that they're not that, you know, the thing about fireworks, it doesn't matter when you see them. They're spectacular. It doesn't matter, right? But once you see one drone show, you're like, well, okay, they just did a different configuration there and, or they did the same one. The variation on the theme is kind of limited. And it's noiseless, so it doesn't have the.
The grandeur.
The grandeur of it, right? It's actually kind of subdued and anticlimactic. So I think it's very limited impact and the cost is extraordinary. Now, drone technology is evolving every year and maybe there'll be a new drone technology that will allow us a different kind of show that might give us more spectacle, but we're not there yet. So I'm willing to let go of the drone show. I'd rather, at some point, I mean, I talked about, well, doesn't necessarily free up money for more programming this year perhaps, but in general, I'd rather free up more money for programming than to have the drone show. And my final Latin metaphor is, you know, I would not, if we did a drone show, I would not do it for Stews and Brews. You know, I would do it for the Fourth of July, if we were going to do it, right? Because it's kind of different between a quinceañera and a birthday. You know, if it's a big event and you're going to spend big money, it has to be congruent.
I agree.
But Stews and Brews and you have this huge, bitterly expensive drone show, it just is not compatible. Is that in alignment?
I agree. And I'm also no on fireworks, much as I love fireworks, but I just, I feel for our community and we always are hearing from people. Even fireworks, you know, in Glencoe or Lake Forest, we're hearing about it and people get upset and the whole dog issue and people who are allergic and allergic and all that. So that's where I'm coming out. All right, Kim next, and then I have Annette.
I don't know that I can add a whole lot. What both of you said is where I'm coming from. No to fireworks, the noise, the trauma for people in this community in particular. There's even, it's nostalgic, but thankfully all of our neighbors do it. So, you know.
If you want to go.
Yeah, you can still, you can still go, but it's more of an opt-in experience. You don't have to hear it quite as strongly if we don't do it in Highland Park. And, yeah, the drones, yeah, it was kind of fun the first time, but not, not super exciting. $50,000 for like a 10-minute show, that's like a lot of dollars per minute, right? And, but maybe, yeah, maybe every so often, maybe every couple of years makes more sense. So maybe not this year.
Right. Thank you. Annette?
So I was reading it just in terms of us as a community and stuff and the trauma-based thing, I was not in favor of fireworks. And I may not be as good as you because I love fireworks from a nostalgic point of view. But I'm totally opposed to them for this year, certainly. I would love to go to RFP just to see what they come back with for a year or two from now and gauge the community. So I'm not willing to totally give up on fireworks. But I don't want them for this year, certainly. I was at Stews and Brews last year and people said, oh, this is really nice, but like, why are they doing this? I mean, people kind of, they thought it was pretty. And the Highland Parkers who were there, you know, it was nostalgic to Fourth of July the last time, so they were pleased. But a lot of people at Stews and Brews and a lot of our other festivals are not necessarily Highland Parkers. So we're paying all this money for others who don't even really understand why we're doing it. And then for Fourth of July, I just, I don't think people think it's special. They didn't think it was special the second time. I don't know why they'd think it's special the third time. So I'm definitely in favor of reevaluating that in a couple of years. I am opposed to spending the money this year at all. And I do think if we look at drones in the future, I agree, I would not be in favor of it just at some random other event. If it's one thing, if it's going to replace the fireworks, that's fine every once in a while. If we're going to have fireworks at some point in the near, in the future, that's fine. But I just, it's too much money.
It might make sense, and I know we're not even talking about it at this point, but it's the, whatever you would call the 250th birthday of the United States in 2026. And so it might be something to consider for July 4th, 2026.
And it could be historical. It wouldn't only just be HP. It could be, you know, American, whatever.
So keep that as something maybe for a year from now, but I just wanted to remind everybody that that's coming.
Thank you.
Who did I have next? I had Yumi, then Carissa, then Tony.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure that that was the other. I did not realize how much pollution fireworks create. I will think very differently about them in the future. It's incredible to me. I do want to say that I, and I understand the expense issue and I actually had been thinking as well that, you know, every, every few years it would make sense, you know, to do a drone show. There are far more spectacular drone shows than we've, I mean, I've enjoyed the ones we've done, but there are, I can share video that people have shared with me.
And they cost more money?
Yeah. I, of course, considered that, that it probably is more expensive. I don't know, maybe the technology, as Councilmember Tapius. I don't know, maybe the technology, as Councilmember Tapius said, will, you know, evolve as technology does, so that it's much more, less expensive. I think, I, I understand not doing it at Stu's and Brew's, I understand that concern that it needs a real event for, for it to happen. But I, whenever we do it, I think it would be honestly spectacular over Central Avenue, Fort Clinton. It's going to be there and see it over the very heart of our central business district.
Setting a drone show.
Drone show, yeah. I, I, for every possible reason, I don't think the fireworks will, will work environmentally. And, and I am still conscious, although I have watched other fireworks show, you know, from a great distance that didn't, you know, trigger me, but, but at the same time, I, I know, I think we were all there. But I, as I said, I was just a block from, you know, what happened in 2022, and it did sound exactly like fireworks. So I, I would like to create some distance regardless between that event. And I, I think that the drone show is still the best way to go. And again, environmentally, there's no comparison.
So do you want a drone show this year, or you're okay taking a pass?
I'm, I'm okay waiting for.
2026?
Yeah, a bigger event. I mean, I could, I could support it, you know, if there was a way to do it with the Fourth of July, but it doesn't sound like scheduling-wise it's possible.
Right, okay. Thank you for the comment. Marissa?
So similar to what has been said, and as someone, again, who was there with her fam, my family in 2022, I would say, I mean, we have seen fireworks, we've gone to other communities, and we've seen them in New York even. It definitely took some time for my family to, you know, the kids to not, you know, freak out. So I would not be in favor of fireworks anytime soon. But I do think similar to what has been said, to maybe survey the community at some point, maybe in a year or two, to see if they would want to do fireworks in the future, because I remember it as, you know, growing up with the fireworks, and it's just driving people that want to see fireworks to other suburbs, which is good and bad. But then you get more, you know, going on in Highland Park and make it, you know, a tradition again with fireworks. Possibly consider fireworks again in the future. I would say no to the drone show, we were there too, and I didn't, it was nice. But again, similar to what's been said, it was like, why, why is it happening here where it should have been around the Fourth of July? So no to the drone show, but maybe reconsider at some point after we take a full survey of the community if people would even, would even want that, yeah, yeah.
Tony?
I have nothing to add to what's been said. I, I agree with everybody's positions and perspectives. I would suggest that in the future, as we begin to consider 2026, we look at a display in conjunction with Independence Day as something to attract people to Highland Park. And the problem with a drone show is it's very expensive. To get something more elaborate and more impactful is going to be substantially more costly. I have a very close friend who is specifically in that field. There are other things to consider that add to the event, including music, lasers, projections, and a variety of other things, but the cost is going to become exponentially greater. I would support that in conjunction with the idea that it could be something to generate attraction to the city. Do we want people coming into the city to celebrate with us for Independence Day?
Looking at Lou.
That's, that's an issue that we have to consider, but those, those are some of the other options.
Right, because I mentioned Tahita, there's a town, oh, it's escaping me right now, in New York that has a huge, like, projected show on buildings. And it attracts tons of people from all over the region.
There's the merchandise, not.
Mon Prospector.
Part of March.
Yeah, part of March, and, yeah, so, you know, we could do something sort of spectacular with lasers and.
But it carries other, other impacts with it that have to be considered. So I'm, I'm very comfortable not doing anything. I really, I, I also like fireworks, and it is a traditional thing, I'm happy to be done with it.
Okay, to be clear. Yes, Andres?
A lot of bullfights.
Yeah, yeah, actually, to that point, I think maybe as a principle that we want to aim for without annoying the answer is I think we owe it to our town to have something memorable, right? Like, if we have no fireworks for the reasons that are stated, and no drone show perhaps because of the cost, but if we then have nothing.
Well, we have a parade, and we have Fourth Fest.
No, but the better making the point that I think we got to have an exclamation mark at the end of the day. The parade's wonderful, the fest is great, but, you know, we do lose.
You want that grand finale.
The grand finale, and whatever that is. And, I mean, not, and one thing that we had actually at the one-year anniversary was a concert. And that was a really great festival, right? And it was very super, and everybody loved it, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, that could be the exclamation mark, I don't know. So it doesn't have to exacerbate the style, right? But I think something where you could, an exclamation mark.
I agree.
Well, we can talk about just because they're doing entertainment, certainly at Fourth Fest, so it'd be something more grandiose.
That's it, I mean, that's nice for the family thing, for what it is. But that festival at the end at the.
At the evening, is what you're thinking. Okay. All right, good food, good wine, thanks, everybody. We don't have a closed session, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of saying, "All right." Amy, thanks for coming.